Meeting of the Board of Selectmen is called to water. This is the June 23 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This is Maris DiPaolo, Chair of the Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Beth Cassavant?
Present.
John LeBeau?
Present.
Jim Kane?
Present, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening to you. John Samia?
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar?
Present.
Valerie Clemmie?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, any anticipated speakers on the agenda? Christopher Mena?
Present.
Thank you. I don't think Bernard Caveo or Mark Faverman are on yet. We'll see if they appear later in the meeting. So I have to go through how the meetings are conducted remotely. This is an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you will find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. The Board of Selectmen is... For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Hangout as posted on the town website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that you take care not to share screen, your computer unless asked by the chairperson or staff person. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. But before we do so, I will cover some rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for a particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or questions. I will then call upon them... If there is a vote required, I will call upon the members to offer a motion in the second. Please hold your name until it is called... Please hold until your name is called. Again, please remember to mute your phone and your computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. To mute or unmute your telephone, dial star six. Please remember this being clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present, please hold until your name is called to present. After your presentation, the members of the Board will be given the opportunity to ask questions. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If any members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting must be conducted by a roll call vote. Okay, having said that, I'll move to the first order of business this evening. That is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. As all the members know, this is traditionally done in the first meeting after the annual town election, and that's usually in May, but as things are happening now, it's June. So we'll move to... We'll move to reorganize the Board. So could I have a motion for Chair for the Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau?
Mr. Chairman, firstly, I'd like to congratulate Selectmen Cassavant and you on your reelections, happy to be continuing to work with you. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board elect Beth Cassavant as its next Chair.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is that you, Mr. Kane?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Any other names to be put into nomination? Okay, there being none, I will take a roll call vote. John Samia?
Aye.
Jim Kane?
Aye.
John LeBeau?
Aye.
Thank you. Maris DiPaolo, aye. Beth Cassavant?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Ms. Cassavant. The meeting is now in your capable hands.
All right. Thank you very much for your leadership over this past tumultuous year, Selectmen DiPaolo. And I will take the virtual gavel now and ask if we could have a nomination for Vice Chair, please.
Yes, Chairman, I would like to...
Mr. Samia?
Yes, I would like to move that we elect John LeBeau as Vice Chairman.
Miss Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. I will take a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye, thank you.
Congratulations. I will now ask for a nomination for Clerk.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to nominate my... I would like to nominate my recently new neighbor to Precinct Five, Mr. Samia.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will take a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Thanks for the introduction, aye.
And myself, aye. So that motion passes. Now that our Board has been reorganized, we can move on to the next order of business, which is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant, aye. That passes. The next item is to approve the minutes of the May 26, June 4, June 9, June 11, and June 15, 2020 meetings of the Board of Selectmen. We can approve them all at once unless someone has some corrections or additions or edits that they'd like to make to the minutes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau?
Hearing none, I move that the Board approve the various sets of minutes that you just noted.
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo? You're muted.
Sorry, I forgot about that. Aye.
Okay, Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We move on to the announcements or reports. Does anyone have any announcements this evening? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, I just wanted to note and follow up on some messaging that we provided to the residents over the weekend with regards to our drinking water wells. Unfortunately, a week or so ago, our Sewell Number Four well seized up and went offline, and we are in the process of having that well extracted from the ground and rebuilt and repaired so we can get it back into operation. And Sewell Number Four is one of our most high-producing wells, and that level of productivity is hard to replicate in any of our other wells or wellfields, and we are further limited by the amount of water that we are allowed to withdraw from our home farm wellfields, which is another one of our sources of water. That has led to several days of very tight limitations on water. Normally, on average, we extract about 3.6 million gallons of water per day, and given the heat and extra water usage over the last week, we're averaging nearly 5 million gallons a day. And we take a high-producing well out of commission during that time. It really strains the system, and we have been unable to even replenish all of our holding wells in the evening. So this is really a call to the residents to limit outdoor water usage and any unnecessary water usage for the next week or so until we can get this well pump repaired. Hopefully, we'll continue to keep everyone updated. So this is not really just a general water ban notification or request for reduction. This is, you know, a serious matter, especially if we would have a situation where there was a house fire or a brush fire that would break out in these very dry conditions. At one point, our key wells on Oak... Our key holding tanks on Oak Street only had about 11 vertical feet of water in it, which is only about a third of its capacity. So we're really asking residents to limit their water usage. I know everyone would like to have a nice green lawn. Mine's brown right now, and it works just fine. You don't have to mow it as much, so please limit outdoor water usage and any unnecessary water usage, especially during this very dry time. It's also contributing to some, you know, dirty water conditions because we've had to turn the system on and off as we try to get... As we get that pump out and out of service. So we apologize for the dirty water conditions that folks have had in the past. Whenever we've had drought conditions, that's led to additional dirty water, but we do not anticipate that this year because of the functioning of the new water treatment plant. But when the system surges and we take wells on and off, it does create some disruption in water pressure. So bottom line, we're asking everyone to further limit their water usage to only what's really necessary and follow the water ban, no outdoor watering. That would really help our system and really help you in the event of a fire or your neighbor, you know. Hopefully, nothing like that happens, but it could be a serious situation. Moving on from that, I just wanted to update the Board that earlier this week, Selectmen Cassavant, Selectmen LeBeau, and I, along with a panel of nine other individuals, participated in the second round police chief interview process, and we interviewed two candidates, both who performed very well, and we'll move on to a final selection of the town's new police chief within the coming days. That is all necessary because, as I announced at the last meeting or two meetings ago, Chief Hester is retiring at the end of the month, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank Chief Hester for his service to the town and just provide the Board with a summary and perhaps hear your comments thereafter with his remarkable career. So I know Chief Hester certainly would not want this to be done, but it's well-deserved, to say the least. Chief James Hester first started with the town on September... Excuse me, July 16, 1987, as a patrol officer. He was in that position for nine years and was promoted to Sergeant on March 12, 1996. After 10 years as Sergeant, he was promoted to the position of Chief on April 9, 2007, for which he served 14 years, and will have 33 years of service this July. You know, it's been a remarkable career, very high level of service in all of those roles and ranks. He's performed wonderfully in very difficult situations, both the present and throughout his entire career. He's been a steadfast and steady hand and a part of the leadership team, and I've enjoyed working with him, and I just want to congratulate him on those 33 years of service. That is all for my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. LeBeau? Yes.
Madam Chairman, I failed to make mention of something during announcements. Thank you for allowing me. As was mentioned, we recently had an election, I think, and a rather unusual election in the way it was conducted. I simply want to acknowledge all the great work that the Town Clerk's Office did, and I particularly want to thank our poll workers who came forward under difficult circumstances. And from all reports I've heard, it was a very smooth, efficient, and effective election, and that's the cornerstone of how we do our business as a democracy and a republic. So I want to recognize them for the great work they did with the challenges of the coronavirus. Thank you.
No, thank you for bringing that up. It's very important to recognize their hard work in making it happen under such crazy times. All right, well, we're going to move on to item six, which is a continued... Yes?
I'm sorry, I didn't... I didn't mean... Well, I did mean to interrupt, but I actually wasn't completely prepared to say anything relative to the Chief because I know he likes to keep everything low-key. But I've known him probably since he got on the force, and when he became Chief in 2007, we had a police department, and I'm sure Mr. LeBeau remembers, that was in quite a bit of disarray. There were a lot of issues that he inherited, and he stepped in and very methodically and very humbly began to address the issues that the department had, really worked with the offices, and came to determine what the issues were that needed to be addressed. And with the office's cooperation and his leadership, that department, over the past 14 years, has been incredible. It just... They just do their work. They're all quiet about it, just very low-key, but they get the work done. And I just have to say that is really responsible for that. The officers obviously pitched in and cooperated, but I just think with his leadership, very unassuming, not putting himself really publicly out ahead of the guys, I just think he did a really, really great job. And, you know, he was through some difficult... We had some difficult times, mostly financial, that he had to work through, and he did a great job at it. He was a good advocate, or he's been a good advocate for the department. And I think two things. I think, number one, I think he's going to be sorely missed, but at the same time, knowing the superior offices in particular and the time that he spent with them, I think the department's going to be left in good hands. And I think whoever the new Chief is coming out of the ranks of our current offices is going to be positioned to do very well because of the mentorship and the support of Chief Hester. And I just think we owe him a great deal of thanks for what he's done over the past 14 years.
Mr. Kane, did you have something to add?
I think it's been well-covered. Thank you, though.
Okay. All right, yes, I definitely think you did a great job, Mr. DiPaolo, of capturing all of our feelings about the work that the Chief has done here during his time in Truysbury, and we are very much grateful for his leadership, and we wish him the best in his retirement. And we're going to move on to item number six, which is a continued public hearing with Keith Lindem, proposed manager of 81 Clinton Pub LLC doing businesses Billy's Pub. We are going to continue this public hearing until, I believe, the July 14 meeting. Can I have a motion to continue the hearing?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask a question relative to how long we are thinking it would be reasonable to continue this? At some point, those who are interested will be exhausted, and then one night we'll finalize the hearing, and without a republation or in some way advising them, they risk not knowing that we're actually going to take action. Is there a... Is there something that a manager can report that we think there's a reasonable timeline associated with this?
Mr. Mizikar?
As the Board likely knows, there's no statutory limitation on your ability to continue the hearing. However, I would say that now, as in-person dining is permissible again, at least at 50%, that we will, as staff, reach out to the applicant and ask a series of questions to discern their timeline for reopening and advise the Board at your next meeting as to that status.
Thank you very much.
So shall we continue on to move this, or should we wait until we hear back from Mr. Lindem about his plans?
I've requested the Board continues this one more time to the 14th.
Okay, very good. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to continue?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Our next item of business is a meeting with Bernie Cahill, the Town Planner, and Mark Faverman, the consultant for Faverman Designs on the Town Center Wayfinding Review. We're going to take a look at some updated signs, I believe, for the center of town, and I see that Mr. Cahill has joined us, so I'll let you take it from here.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Chairwoman. Is Mark Faverman, are you on? I see a couple numbers. I'm not sure if one of them is his number. If he wasn't able to join us tonight, I'll just take it over. So last time, at the last meeting that the wayfinding was presented at, the Board of Selectmen had requested to see some renderings based on some different ornamental designs for the posts for the signage and kind of framing around the signage. So Mark did provide that. Oh, Mark is... There he is. He's just joined us now. So Mark, I was just teeing you up to go over the slides. Let me get them up for you. You are on mute right now. So I'll let you unmute, and I'm going to go ahead and share them, and then I'll let you speak to the slides that you've brought before you, and then the Selectmen can move to a vote if they so wish. So let me get them up. Can everyone see those?
Yeah, I think you're good.
Okay, so I don't know, is Mark...
I'm... Mark is talking now, right?
Okay. Yes, we can hear you now.
So the idea was, after studying the historical markers, which are very plain, but they're black and gold, we came up with a series of details and decorative ironwork that can be added to the signs. Now, initially, what we showed you was a very cost-effective signage package. This is going to add a little bit more money to it, but shouldn't be too extensive in terms of the cost, in terms of a budget. So this is the first one, and we might as well go through all of them and then come back to them. This is another one, and you see there is a historical quality to all of them. Another approach at the top. And next. Here's another design, and I think we have two more or one more, Bernie?
One more.
One more, okay. And that sort of shows you just a different variation. So we can start at the top again, and you can ask questions or make comments, and hopefully once you come up with some kind of majority opinion, we can come back to you at the next meeting with a family of elements that show how all these... Or how that one group of ornamentation will be applied. So that's our next step. We're willing to do that and to show you a finished product. So any comments on this?
Board members, any comments? Yes, Mr. Kane?
One question regarding process. My understanding is that the downtown group, and I think Mo had some level of involvement with them, has reviewed this. Am I correct?
The initial designs...
Yeah.
The graphic, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
This presentation is an add-on that we are doing at the request of the Select Board.
Yes, thank you. And Bernie, has the new owner of the Brick Block and the Bank property, have they received any outreach regarding this effort?
They, through the Town Center Association, are aware that the wayfinding study has taken place, and I've shared with them the link to all of the documents. We haven't put tonight's link up yet. Excuse me, we haven't put them up yet with these decorative ideas. I wanted the Selectmen to see them first.
No, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure that they have been involved, given the level of investment they've made in the center. So thank you very much.
Yes, definitely.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo?
If you're looking for preferences, I like A... I like A, B, and D. That's my preference at this point.
Bernie, you want to show B and D as well? Let's be... And D.
I do think to Mr. Kane's point at the last meeting, E is a little bit more than the plain sign that we saw, but I don't think it's much more except for the piece at the top. So I think if we're going to do something, it should be a little bit more ornamental. I did go back and look at Mr. Faverman's... Excuse me for one second.
So while Mo gets the door, I have a question about the cost. Mr. Faverman, you mentioned something in your comments, and I want to make sure that what we're choosing doesn't exceed the cost estimate and what we were planning to spend on this, and so if someone could just answer that?
So Bernie has a cost estimate that I sent him on the initial one, and there's a range, and I think when you send out for a bid, it'll be on the higher number with the ornamental and decorative ironwork on it.
So are each of these signs then in the same price range?
Roughly, yes. Yeah. Bernie, do you have that cost estimate that you can...
I do, I can share it. One second.
So when we come back, I may not need to be on the next meeting, and Bernie can do it, but I'll have the... All the elements that we're talking about, which we showed you last time. So there's a hierarchy of elements in terms... So there's a hierarchy of elements in terms of how people use it for directional and for wayfinding and for entrances to the town and to the downtown area.
So if you're ready.
Eventually, it can be also applied to neighborhoods in different ways as well.
Hold on, just still trying to pull it up. There we go. Okay, so these are the cost elements that we have here. Can everyone see that?
Yes, I guess my question, Bernie, is does choosing one of these signs put us over the proposed budget for the project?
So we, the budget for the project was just for the design. It wasn't for the manufacture of anything, so nothing's going to be fabricated from this. And I think I wanted to emphasize that as well. I'm going to stop sharing this if that's all right. So pretty much what the board's going to be looking at to do either today, or if they want to go ahead with Mark's suggestion next time, is to look at the design itself, the picture itself, and approve or recommend that as their suggestion for going forward. I think some of these design elements are going to have to be costed out the next time we come around to having the funds for this. I know money's obviously going to be very tight in town the next year or two. So sometimes you'll see in other towns, the selectmen will go ahead and approve something or endorse something, and it will be a couple of years before the financing's ready to, the town has the financing to put these signs in place and get them fabricated, if that makes any sense. So what the board is looking at, what I'm looking at the board to do today is regardless, I mean, so the first and foremost thing is to, is do you like the design and the branding of the sign itself? And then if the board wishes, they certainly can endorse one of the design elements, which is the posts and kind of the framing around the signs. But I don't think they have to, and I feel the board doesn't need to be locked into anything at this time. I don't want the board to feel that way, and I don't think we should, because circumstances are always changing. And in two years' time, maybe we'll, we'll get another grant to build them, and they can build, you know, whatever our heart desires. But it may not be that much either. So some of it's going to depend on costs in the future. So I think for tonight, what I'd be looking for is the board to say, we really like this design or not. And then to decide whether or not they want to weigh in right now on the decorative elements around the sign. And then Mark, if you do, then Mark is willing, it sounds like, to go back and do all those different types of signs you saw last time, and whatever it is the board would like to see them, the decorative elements put onto. So I think those are the two things that the board needs to decide tonight.
Thank you. All right, board members, I think that we can probably make a decision on the design of the sign and wrap this up instead of having Mr. Faverman put together more more, more pictures, I guess, for us to look at. I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks about that, and then we can vote on it if we're comfortable.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
I, I, I apologize if I haven't run out, but it was a town-related matter, actually. Believe it or not. Are we, are we, um, we're in agreement on, and I may admit this, on the, on the, on the scene, correct? To me, that's the threshold question. Are we in agreement this is going to be the scene?
Well, I think that's what we're trying to determine, because when we last met with Mr. Faverman, we were discussing whether or not we wanted Core of the Commonwealth. We asked him to do a mock-up without Core of the Commonwealth. He's done that. I'm happy with it. I'm okay to vote on this and go forward with this scene. I just need to know if other people are in the same place.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm okay moving forward tonight. I think at some point it would be nice to see what the smaller signs look like, but I think I think we could make a decision with, with what we have. So I'm, I, I'm prepared. I think Core of the Commonwealth, I think we pretty much knocked that out at the last meeting.
Yeah, I would agree.
So personally, I'm, I'm good. I could make a decision.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Selectmen Samia, please.
I was just going to say I'm fine with the image. I think that we talked about it quite a bit at our last meeting, the elements. I'm fine either way. I have a preference, but let's knock the image out at a minimum, and I'm fine with it.
Madam Chair, I agree with Selectmen Samia. I'm okay with the scene and prepared to vote.
Okay, very good. And I will take a motion then to approve the proposed design and locations of the wayfinding elements.
Some of.
Sorry, Mr. LeBeau. A second.
I am going to take a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo? Mr. DiPaolo?
Sorry, I, I overstepped Mr. LeBeau, and then I turned the mic off. Aye.
Okay, Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Hey, myself, aye. Thank you, Mr. Faverman, for your work on this and for bringing back a different design for us, and thank you, Mr. Cahill, as well.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to a meeting with Christopher Mena, Town Moderator, to discuss postponing the June 29th, 2020 annual town meeting. Mr. Mena, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Evening. Nice to see you all, and congratulations, Ms. Cassavant, on your election as chair.
Thank you. So would you like to take us through your thoughts on this June 29th town meeting? I know there's a lot of scuttlebutt on social media about whether or not it's actually happening. So maybe we can put the public out of wondering mode.
Right. I was actually asked by two different residents of town today, without even leaving my office in Worcester. Well, I think, I think you've, I think the board made it clear two weeks ago that while setting, while signing the warrant and setting the meeting for June 29th, that it was unlikely that June 29th would in fact be the date that we would be in a position to safely hold our annual town meeting at, at, certainly in an indoor location. But the board determined that the, the date, the official date on the warrant would be June 29th, 7:00 PM at Shrewsbury High School. Specific location at the school to be determined. The suggestion was made by a number of us, myself included, that that we use the fieldhouse at the high school rather than the Oak Middle School auditorium due to its much larger size and and the ability to space representatives and other attendees apart in, consistent with the governor's advisory on social distancing and other health-related factors. Since that time, I know that my own concerns about holding the meeting both on that date and at that location, in an indoor location, have increased, I think it's fair to say. I've been keeping tabs on virtually every other town in the Commonwealth that's had town meetings in May and June. And just to get a sense of what other towns are doing, the locations, the steps that they're taking to ensure a safer, more healthy environment, the coordination of the various town employees and departments in order to make the, the, the meeting as efficient as possible and as accessible as possible. And I think my understanding about being asked at the next meeting is that we need to talk about the possibility of, of continuing the meeting for another period of up to 30 days, which we are allowed to do under the, the recently enacted statute, Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, where the towns were, are given much greater flexibility to continue the dates of their annual town meetings in, up to multiple times, multiple extensions of 30 days each, or of up to 30 days each. The towns now have the, the ability to reduce, to temporarily reduce the quorum required for a town meeting by up to 90% so that we could actually, if we were concerned about being able to get a quorum to attend, and our quorum is 121 people, one more than 50% of our 240 representatives, that we would actually be able to reduce the quorum for this year, the old town meeting, to as low as 13 people. I don't personally think that's necessary, but we might consider some reduction if, if, as, if we're collectively concerned that there might be a problem in, in getting 121 people to attend and to stay at the meeting. We also have the opportunity to change the location of the meeting to a outdoor location, if thought is that that would be a safe requirement. We, we could actually even change the location to another town outside of Shrewsbury if we felt that there was a safer location and a more accommodating location to have it. So I think we, I think all of those issues are on the table to, for tonight's discussion. We need to make a decision as soon as possible about a continuation date so that the word can get out to town meeting representatives and frankly, all citizens of the town. And on my list of issues to discuss are, in addition to setting a date beyond June 29th, are whether or not the meeting place should be outdoors or indoors, whether or not we should consider a reduction of the quorum just for purposes of this town meeting. And thirdly, whether or not we should consider using what's called a consent agenda, which is a very popular device in many towns, as customarily use it in order to group together articles which are considered non-controversial and, and which would involve very little or no discussion and be voted on almost unanimously in every case. We would have the opportunity to consider a number of, taking a number of articles and with the consent of the meeting itself, taking them out of order and grouping them together so that they could be dispensed with in, almost in one fell swoop, in order to shorten the length of the meeting. Because that would certainly be one of the objectives this year, would be to have the meeting as quickly as possible in order to reduce the amount of time that a large group of people are, are spending in proximity with each other. So I'll, I'll let you folks share your thoughts about those issues and ask any other questions of me you might have.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Misakar?
I have also been trying to follow what a lot of other towns are doing, and I've consulted with our colleagues at the Worcester Department of Public Health and received the advice of Dr. Michael Hirsch, that he's uncomfortable with the town moving forward with town meeting as scheduled for the 29th within the fieldhouse. I've consulted with Chairperson Vigent of the local Board of Health, and he has the same feelings. And I've, you know, and shared that with the moderator prior to the meeting. And in, in my observance of what is going on in other communities, the vast majority, as the moderator have said, are, are holding them in an outdoor facility at this point in time. We're starting to see a few this week that did occur indoors. And my, some of them are, including Danvers, last evening occurred inside their fieldhouse in a similar setup, which, you know, we are working on. I am in agreement also, or would recommend, and will work with the board to consider the reduction of the quorum, and just like the moderator said, it's not to limit the amount of people that come, but to ensure that we can carry out the business and also support the concept of a consent agenda. I know Chatham was very successful in taking 40 warrant articles and passing them through 12 different motions. So I think all those options should be on the table. It would be my recommendation at this, at this evening's meeting. I know the moderator has the, the ultimate authority and discretion, but that the meeting would be continued for 30 additional days for the 29th, or excuse me, the, the 29th or the 27th of July, depending if you want to set it for, you know, if the moderator were to set it for a Monday, which is traditional start day. And we would either likely be able to have that, the meeting that night, or within the next few weeks thereafter, I think, as long as we continue in this favorable trajectory with regards to the virus. And it would be my recommendation this evening that no change of venue be listed. We will consider an outdoor venue and what that would take, and further enhancements to the indoor venue over the next few weeks, which we've worked on over the past few weeks, and be in a better position to make a recommendation. Of course, the venue can be changed, changed through a simple amendment of the warrant through the Board of Selectmen if necessary.
I might add that, as I believe I mentioned two weeks at your last meeting, or the meeting before, that the, the emergency legislation that was passed also permits representative town meeting towns to hold their annual town meetings virtually. And I believe as many as six, maybe even a few more towns, representative town meeting towns have in fact held their annual town meetings using video conferencing technology and supplemented by other technology that's been added in by various vendors and volunteers. All of the reports of those meetings have been remarkably, that they were remarkably successful and well-received in their towns. The discussions that I've had with, with you folks, as well as offline with town, with the town manager and Chair of the Selectmen and several others, was that we were not inclined to try that this year. But I think we should at least hold it out as a possibility in case the health advisories do not improve significantly. And, or in fact, if, if, if we were to take a step backwards in terms of the developments in the number of incidents of reported test, positive tests and, and illness, that it is still something that we could consider, but it, it, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of people doing very specific tasks in order to pull that off. So I think it's something that is, it's very appealing intellectually, but on a practical level, I'm still in favor of trying to hold the meeting live at a location and, and a time when we all can feel that it's safer than it is right now.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Question for the moderator. Mr. Manny, could you expand a little bit about this consensus agenda, I believe you called it, approach? My, I mean, I think it's an excellent idea. My question is, stay-at-town meeting member does want to speak about a particular article. Is there, is there a provision that if necessary, you can pull an article out? I mean, how is that handled?
Yes, in fact, there's, the way that it, it customarily works in the towns that, that use it virtually every year, is that the moderator, working with the manager, the Board of Selectmen or its, or its delegate, will go through the warrant in advance of the meeting, identify the articles that appear to be suitable for the consent agenda, articles, as I said earlier, that would not tend to generate controversy, questions, or no votes, for that matter. And let's say that out of the, out of the, is it 41, 42 articles this year? Sorry. We had identified 17 articles that were considered unlikely to generate any controversy and, and would be likely to be approved on a voice vote with, with very little discussion or no discussion. The, at the beginning of the meeting, or at whatever point in time, we, we thought it would be appropriate to introduce the consent agenda. I'd have to do two things. First, I'd have to announce at the beginning of the meeting that I was proposing to use a consent agenda, which is a, which for Shrewsbury would be a new concept, just to explain to the representatives and attendants that we will be, I would be the representatives in attendance that we will be, I would be asking them during the meeting, once or one or more times, to take articles out of order in order to group them together for a brief description and then a vote on each one. Our bylaws do not permit us to take a blanket vote for more than one article at a time, but we can certainly group together the, as many articles as we think are appropriate for the consent agenda, just to have a very brief description of each one and then ask for a vote on each one quickly. Any, as those articles are read, there would be an understanding and an explanation that any representative could simply raise his or her hand or call out "hold," and that article would then be taken up separately and not be made part of the consent agenda. So there's, I guess you'd say, an absolute veto power on the part of any representative to take something off of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I make one comment as well?
Sure, of course.
To the concept of reducing the quorum, I think, I think I'm in favor of that for this meeting. I think we want to make sure that the night we choose to have the meeting, we have the meeting. And I do think reducing the quorum will do that, considering the times that we're in. And I mean, interestingly, many open town meeting towns have had a huge, ongoing quorum issue unrelated to Corona. And what many towns have done has reduced their quarums to ridiculously low numbers, including as low as zero. And what that actually does is get more people to come to town meeting, because if you set a quorum of 10, people are afraid only 10 people are going to show up and do all the business of the town. So I would like to think about reducing the quorum, but expecting we would likely still get our normal quorum, but if for some reason, something went sideways, we could still have a town meeting.
Right. I would think, just thinking about past attendance and the level of interest among our representative, among our elected representatives, that it shouldn't be necessary to reduce the quorum below 50% of the regular quorum. But I know that there are towns out there that have reduced their quorum all the way down to the permitted 10% of the regular quorum. In a representative town meeting town, it really shouldn't be necessary to do that. And I would think that we would not have a problem with a reduced quorum of as much as 50%. But that's just a suggestion, and I leave it up to you folks to have that discussion. The statute reads that it's the selectmen that make the proposal and vote on the amount of the reduction, and it has to be with the approval of the moderator. But I can assure you that, you know, I would like this to be a collaborative process among all of us. And if you folks come up with a number or a percentage that you think is the right number, then I'll be perfectly happy with that and give my approval.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
Earlier on, when this challenge of COVID-19 began, the board made it quite clear that we were going to take our time and work through where we were. We adopted the process of the 112 budget. And at our last meeting, we had a conversation about some departments can go longer on a 112, or with uncertainty, if you will, while others need a degree of certainty with that in mind, the school department. So as we're looking at setting a town meeting and where it would be or where it won't be, I'm wondering if Kevin or the moderator can speak to how much time we have, simply because I know many people who are dedicated town meeting members who are reluctant to go into the fieldhouse regardless of how far we face people. And the reality is, as you get into our summer, you know, you can have a lovely day, and then evening thunder showers come through. So I'm okay with an outside one, but I understand why people are reluctant to do so. So I'm wondering, practically speaking, we push it out, and we can push it out, we can push the town meeting out under one statute, but then there's a practical element to running the town that the manager has to deal with and the superintendent and others. So Kevin, in your opinion, how much, what's the latest we can go before we start impacting operations and the ability of departments to run?
The challenges really begin as we near the final week of August, the traditional start of school. As the superintendent has said time again, you know, we're beyond the comfort level of making normal decisions, but treading beyond there and not having a foundational budget in place that we know that's the point we're going to amend from in the future really becomes a challenge for them. So really, under no circumstances do I think that we can tread beyond the end of August. It would be my recommendation, you know, to propose either the 10th or the 17th of August as a start date, as we line this up and determine whether health conditions would permit it.
Thank you very much.
Benip Jimin.
Mr. DiPaolo.
If I could ask a question, are we, I'm confused, are we talking about still having it in the fieldhouse, but at a later date, or are we talking about having it outside? What's the primary venue that we're looking at?
Mr. Mizikar?
It's my recommendation still this evening to try to have, keep the venue as the fieldhouse. I understand that there are concerns. It's my hope that in that more controlled environment, that we are able to have the virus conditions move favorably and more people will feel comfortably. I know it's hard to project, but if we can look backwards, which is easier for us to do, if we go back, you know, six weeks in comparison to where we are today, we've made significant progress. And hopefully, that progress continues at the same pace forward into early August. And if it would, then, you know, six weeks ago, everything was still closed, and starting yesterday, as you all know, indoor dining was permissible again. So I think as individuals see the progress of the virus as one, and two, begin to resume some aspects of their more normal public life, you certainly, under many conditions, learn to adapt and find ways to feel more comfortable. And that's my hope. So keeping it indoor would be my recommendation.
Madam Chair, can I ask a couple of follow-ups?
Of course.
If we did have it outside, as a practical matter, we'd want to have it in the afternoon, right? I would think. So that puts it on a Saturday and not earlier than 2:00, is that right?
Two or three, yes, you may know better.
Okay. So, okay, we'd have to figure out the logistics of that, but somebody asked me a question yesterday, is if they had to make a presentation outside, how would they do that? If somebody needed to make a presentation and project on the screen, on a screen, how would they do that in the middle of the day? It might be rhetorical, but I mean, I think there's a practical aspect to it.
I mean, many, many towns that have outdoor, have used outdoor venues, have used tents, so that could be one option. I know that further encloses an area, but I know that's been done. I'm not sure what the capabilities of the scoreboard or the screen at the field looks like in the middle of the day. I've never viewed it, but it's certainly a logistical challenge that we will have to address as we plan. And as the moderator will attest, there's, that's one of maybe a couple hundred things that we need to nail down as we start on this path forward. And as you know as well, Mr. DiPaolo, it's something that we've been discussing.
Right. Maybe, just by a thought now, maybe we're going to have to have more printed materials in the package. So if somebody's going to make a presentation that would normally go up on the screen inside, and maybe the members are going to have to be provided with, you know, like the PowerPoint printed out on sheets. But it's something to think about. I'm fine, we're done.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the things that I would like to see happen, if possible, is that we do as much work in advance of the meeting to, at least from a town staff member's standpoint, to record presentations in advance and give town meeting members the opportunity to view them. We can certainly answer questions in the meeting, but if we are going to look to conduct the business meeting and move properly, not necessarily quickly, but properly through it or expeditiously through the warrant, I'm certainly willing to make sure that staff all pre-record their long-duration presentations and only make a few introductory remarks or summary remarks on any item as it comes up when we're in place.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Manah.
Just to follow up on what Mr. Mizikar just said, that has become a very popular method of speeding up the, or making the meeting more efficient, and also to eliminate the need or reduce the need for dependence on video screens during the meeting. The materials have been prepared for, even in open town meeting towns, for all attendees in advance of the meeting, more materials than would typically be handed out, and they put them together in packets and distributed them in advance of the meeting. They've used, other towns have used their community, local access channels to, not only to have, to broadcast pre-recorded presentations on any of the articles that require those presentations, but also to have some live sessions, either precinct by precinct or in some other methods, so that most representatives will have a chance to ask questions ahead of time on multiple dates prior to the actual meeting, all with the intention of reducing the amount of questions from the floor, not to discourage comments or debate from the floor, but just to disseminate the information more efficiently and to make representatives feel that they've got, you know, a complete packet of information before you and walking into the meeting. So I would encourage both of those things to be utilized this year. And I'm certainly willing to participate in any kind of programming in advance of the meeting that we can all agree would be useful, using Shrewsbury Media Connection to get the word out to representatives.
Thank you. Yeah, that's an excellent point, that there's the resource of Shrewsbury Media Connection and their YouTube channel, and also social media as a way to get those presentations out and really, not that we're trying to speed things up, we're trying to strike a balance between people feeling comfortable carrying out the duties of town meeting member and also being mindful of the fact that the time, limiting the time that people are potentially being exposed to the virus. I had a question for you, just as far as swearing in our new town meeting members. I know that's typically something that's done at the town meeting. Is there any thought that's gone into maybe swearing in town meeting members another time, perhaps in one large group outside of town hall on a couple of different days, just to, again, save the time? And also, if we're reducing quorum and not everyone's going to be there, at least they're sworn in.
Right. Certainly, we could discuss that with Sandra Wright and ask her if there's, if she believes there's a more efficient way of doing the swearing in than simply doing it as one of the preliminary activities at the meeting. I don't believe that ever has taken too much time, but reading, possibly reading the names could be shortened or eliminated, and just people could be asked to rise quickly. But if it's possible to do it ahead of time, then that would be fine with me. I'm certainly intending, by the way, to, when we, wherever and whenever the meeting is held, to do everything I can to abbreviate my own commentary and just get out what I think is the essential information that's needed in order for new town meeting members and everyone else in attendance to, you know, understand what we're doing without belaboring any of the points.
Great, thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions? Okay, Mr. Manah, what do you need from us this evening? Do you need a vote as to our agreement with moving it? I know it's finally your decision, but we are working as a team.
Right. I would like to have a sense of the board, whether you do it by vote or just a consensus on another date. I like the idea of keeping our tradition and having the meeting start on a Monday, because if we spill over to another date, at least representatives are accustomed to that schedule, but there's certainly nothing magic about it. If we are going to go the full 30 days for this first continuance, we would go to July 29th, which is a Wednesday, but sometime in that block of days, the 27th, 28th, or 29th would be my suggestion. And if you agree on a date, then I will issue the formal notice that I'm required to issue by the end of this week. And then I would certainly encourage us to get the word out through the town clerk's office, Shrewsbury Media Connection, and in any other way that we can think of in order to make sure that everyone, you know, has a clear understanding of the new date, even though we are admittedly, we're not locking ourselves into that date as well, we're just continuing it to a date that may, again, be continued.
Good, thank you. All right, so why don't I take, get a sense of the board by taking a vote to move the public hearing, postpone the, excuse me, not the public hearing, postpone the annual town meeting for another 30 days?
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, yes. I think Mr. LeBeau just muted, okay.
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Myself, aye. All right, Mr. Manah, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I think that will give you some certainty as far as putting out some notification.
Okay, can I, just for clarification purposes, Madam Chair, I want to make sure we're talking about, first of all, July 29th, which is the full 30-day continuance? Is that, that's the vote you just took?
Correct.
So that's July 29th. By, as Mr. Mizikar mentioned earlier, if we keep the location at Shrewsbury High School, we're not required to specify indoor or outdoor, but we should specify a time. And for the time being, are we talking about 7:00 PM again?
Yep, yes.
Okay, and then finally, I would ask you to consider the reduction of quorum, if not at tonight's meeting, at your next meeting, and to continue that discussion, because I think it's an important enough decision, we would want to get the word out to representative as soon as possible, if only to encourage them all to come, because no one wants to be on the outside looking in in a reduced quorum situation.
Well, let's take a few minutes then, and just make sure that we're all in agreement on the reduction of quorum. I mean, I heard comments from Mr. LeBeau, which I agree with. We don't want to get ourselves into a situation where we've gotten everyone there, and we've done all the work, and then we don't have the quorum, and so we can't have the meeting. So I am personally in favor of having a reduced quorum. Are you looking for a percentage that we have to be held to?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to clarify, and I know we're not going to take a formal vote this evening, and this is just discussion, but when you do do that, we have to provide 10 days' public notice in advance of you taking a vote on it.
Correct, okay.
We will certainly do that, but just in case someone picks up the meeting mid-conversation here, hopefully, they catch this comment, that we will have to provide due public notice.
It's actually a seven-day notice of your intention to vote on reduced quorum, and then within 10 days after taking the vote, you've got to notify the Attorney General's Office.
So should we put this on an agenda for the next meeting? Okay, is that okay? Okay, is that okay with you, Mr. Manah? Does that give you enough time?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine, which is the COVID-19 update from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to share my screen and go through a few slides. I'll just continue to update the board through this conventional slide deck that I have been using. Again, the first positive case was provided to the town or identified in the town on March 19th. Since then, it's been 96 days and 316 positive cases have been identified, which is six additional from your last meeting. We continue to see a reduction of cases per day. Over the last seven days, we've seen a phenomenal reduction of only five cases, which is less than three-quarters of a case per day. And population context, of course, got a little larger as the number increased. I do want to just make sure that everyone is aware that we have changed our reporting on the number of positive cases from a daily basis to a weekly basis, and we will report out each and every Thursday. Now, should we see an increase, a day-over-day increase of note? We will rapidly switch back to daily reporting. Hopefully, we don't have to do that. But if we have any single-day spike or notable increase day-over-day for a few days, we will change back to daily. And this is consistent with the City of Worcester's reporting and will be followed up each Thursday evening with the city manager's press briefing. With regards to deaths, although we have seen a significant decrease in the number of new positive cases, I was saddened to learn that there's been an increase of five deaths that are COVID-19 identified from the board's last meeting. One of those is a clustered case within a facility. There's 97 total deaths over the same period of March 19th through the 22nd, which is yesterday. With regards to the positive case context, unfortunately, this having five additional deaths and only six additional cases has increased the percentage of deaths up by 1.38% to just over 12% of positive cases. Still very low in the context of the overall population, but it did increase since your last meeting. My final slide on this special report with regards to COVID-19 itself. Town buildings will remain closed to the public until July 6th. I know we've been taking a very incremental approach in announcing this. I'm glad that we have done so, and I also think that July 6th is really a date that there will be public activities on a very limited basis resuming at the Town Hall and other public office facilities within the town government. So we're working diligently on plans. We have responsibilities as an employer and as a host of tracking individuals and keeping everyone safe, just like other businesses do, so we are working on that right now. A brief financial update directly related to COVID-19. The town initial application for CARES Act funding of $918,844 was approved by the state, and we have received those funds to reimburse ourselves for costs incurred up through May 31st and costs that we are now able to incur in response to the pandemic for the month of June. An additional application rounds and roughly $2.4 million remain in access to the town through the CARES Act. Our July 2020 one-month or 1/12 budget has been approved by the Department of Revenue, and we've received formal notice of that $18 million budget that was considered and forwarded by the Board of Selectment at your last meeting. We received notice yesterday that the administration, through the governor's office, is going to level fund state aid at the FY 2020 level for the months of July and August in the absence of a budget set forth by the legislature. So while this is good news and hopefully would continue throughout to the course of the year, that is certainly not a guarantee, and the state budget picture remains very bleak. And we just will have to be very cautious and stick to our own revenue model and spending schedule until we have greater certainty from the state level. But this was somewhat good news. And then on the other side of the coin, yesterday, we learned that restaurants and hotels and motels are allowed to continue delay payment on their excise taxes, which come into the town ultimately after passing them through the state. They're allowed to delay those payments until September 20th, 2020, which is a two-month extension on that. I will get into additional information about the town's local budget challenges and positions with regards to fiscal year 20 and a brief look ahead in a few minutes. But I'd be happy to stop sharing my screen and take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Board members, questions and comments? Looks like we are all set to move on to item 10, just a discussion of the budget.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen again. Okay, so I'm going to start with fiscal year 2020. Local receipts, as the board is well aware, local receipts is our third-largest revenue source behind the property tax and state aid. This year, we had budgeted just over $11.6 million in local receipts. In May of 2020, we received $672,000 in actual receipts. If you compare that to the prior year, that was a reduction 46% for the month year-over-year. In May 2019, we received $1.2 million. Through yesterday, June 22nd, we've received $443,582 across the various local receipt categories. In June of 2019, for the entire month, we received $1.7 million. And extrapolating the amount that we've received to date in comparison to June 2019, I'm predicting a 60% year-over-year decline in local receipt revenues for the month of June. So the May estimate ultimately came in, or the May actuals ultimately came in very near the revised estimate that we put forth in early April. But, you know, June seems to be a little bit further off. And I'm very happy that, as of the fiscal year to date, we've achieved the budgeted amount. So we're at 101.13% of what we actually budgeted in our revenue model. As the board knows, and I'm sure the community is aware, we're always very conservative with the local receipts budget, given the model that we're transitioning from as far as our reserves and our overall financial conditions. To date, that number, the 11.7 number, is $1,336,000 less than fiscal year 2019. I would predict that it's very likely that, you know, we'll only, we'll come in at least $1 million less than fiscal year 2019, probably more likely $1.1 or $1.2 million less. And if we look back at the pace that we were on on March 31st, 2020, if we were able to continue through, quote-unquote, "a normal year" based upon being three-quarters of the way into the year, I estimate that we would have collected $1.9 million more in total than we will likely collect for this fiscal year and when it comes to local receipts. So that $1.9 million would have ultimately flown, you know, moved into free cash at the end of the fiscal year and used in future years for reinvestment in our stabilization account, reinvestment in capital improvement plans, and other special projects set forth under the direction of the Board of Selectment. So while it's nice to achieve our budget, which means we're not going to be in a deficit situation from our local receipts revenue standpoint, we're certainly nowhere near a normal year or what we really would have likely received should the pandemic not have come upon us. So moving on, I just note to the board that unfortunately, the utility revenue update doesn't get any better than the local receipts. It's actually a little bit more challenging. This honestly wasn't something that I thought would have been an issue whenever we were considering the challenges that were set before us in late March and early April. If you recall, my initial financial impact analysis incorrectly, I kind of estimated that, you know, utility bills would continue to be paid. They're certainly lagging a little bit further behind local receipts, which, again, we've achieved our budget level. We've only achieved our revenue budget level for stormwater. With regards to solid waste and water and sewer, we're in the low 90%, low to mid-90%. We have a couple, a little over a week to go. Certainly for both local receipts and utility revenue, we have given taxpayers and ratepayers the ability to delay payment through June 30th without any penalty. We're running out of those dates, and I'm losing confidence within the utilities that we're actually going to achieve 100%. I also don't anticipate that there's going to be any individual utility that would be in an actual deficit position, because we've really been stringent on our spending. But it's going to be very tight in especially water and sewer as towards the end of the fiscal year, unless we see a significant bump in revenue during the last week of months, because individuals have just delayed their payments. So anyone that has been holding their payments, this is my, again, continued plea that time's running out and it's critical for our operations, continued operations and public safety in a number of ways for us to achieve our revenue budgeted amounts for this fiscal year. So I guess I can pause there, Madam Chair. And before I go into fiscal year 21 and see if there's any questions with regards to revenues or expenses for fiscal year 20 that the board would like to discuss.
Board members, questions, comments?
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Two quick questions, Kevin. As you're looking at this year into next year, there's obviously the challenge as we, as we deal with the unknowns, that we could perhaps more easily solve one year's problems, but just line ourselves up for another problem the following year that can actually be more difficult. What are you seeing, or to the extent you've had a chance to even think about this, what are you seeing relative to the multi-years, 2021, 22?
So there are a number of challenges that lie ahead. One of the ones that sits on the forefront is, I think prudently so, we've identified $835,000 in free cash that was going to go into the stabilization account, and we'll use that to offset some of the revenue reductions and infuse that within the operating budget to preserve operations. So that's a one-time revenue source, and it is not going to replenish itself through a new payment schedule for fiscal year 22. So that's an initial $835,000 gap. And that $835,000 is, you know, twice, or we're originally proposing to use about $400,000 in free cash. So that's double the, we've added double that amount to it, over 200% additional free cash. So that's a hurdle that we're going to have to climb. And then, of course, operationally, as you know, as the chairman of the committee, the building committee, the new elementary school, the Beale Elementary School, was set to open within fiscal year 2022 for the 21, 22 school year. So that is a challenge that lies before us. Our pension system is subject to market conditions. And while the stock market has played games relative to the overall economy, maybe we move in a sideways fashion, but it's unlikely that we'll achieve our expected 7.5% return. So we'll have to take further considerations on when we're going to be able to achieve our full funding schedule. So those are probably the three biggest challenges, at least for a multi-year perspective that I see.
Okay, Madam Chairman, one follow-up if I could?
Of course.
And not to ask the town manager to place this at the top of his priority list, but in the coming meeting or two, could you report what we see as the opportunity cost of the town's commitment to patrolling the Quinzigman area? I know we have a vote out, it seems to be out regularly. I hear good things from our town residents who vote. I understand there's been a good partnership with the environmental police as well. I'm interested in understanding just how many hours we patrol and what that opportunity cost is to other activities that police could be doing, and ultimately, the bottom line of what that commitment costs us dollar-wise. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. DiPaolo.
If I could ask a question to Mr. Mizikar. By the, the governor pushing off those excises, those due dates for the excise tax for two months, that means, not that we would have gotten it anyways, but that pushes that revenue into the, into 2021, right?
Yes, absolutely, pushing into 2021.
So that, that doesn't help us, it'll help us for free, well, potentially for the 2022 budget, but it's lost for 2021, right?
It's lost for 2020, yeah. And we will not be able to properly estimate it, which I think is what you're saying for 2021. Correct.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, I think you're good to move ahead, Mr. Mizikar.
Okay. So this is a slide that I presented, I think, at the last two meetings, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but this is our revenue model that we used for our July 2020 budget, and I think is the best revenue model that we have right now, which identifies a series of reductions in the tax levy through new growth, state aid, local receipts, and total use of free cash. Although I note in the sub-bullet there at the bottom that we are infusing the $835,000 that was going to go to stabilization into the operating budget, which is a 267% increase in use of free cash within the operating budget, which is very helpful and necessary for fiscal year 21, but is a long-term challenge for the town's financial conditions. Just wanted to summarize where we've moved from what I'm calling fiscal projection one and a half. And the reason I'm calling it one and a half is because we presented fiscal projection one in the early days of March to the Finance Committee and then have not produced an official updated version of the fiscal projection since then. However, after that meeting, things began to solidify for health insurance. We were able to move some funds around, and we created a slight alternative within the budget where $300,000 additional fund was moved from health insurance over to the school department. But since then, since that one single change thereafter, as we look to make changes based on the revenue model that I showed on the previous slide, there are serious implications to all aspects of the budget that I'm recommending. Within the debt service and operating support, which is budget categories that value about just shy of $30 million that benefit both town and school operations predominantly, there's a reduction of almost two-tenths of a percent of $51,000. Obviously, our debt service schedule is set in stone, and it's our obligation to make those payments. Operating support, we found some savings in some categories, and we had to increase spending in other categories. For instance, unemployment insurance obligations sit within the operating support budget, so we have to increase those. We continue to see, you know, five to 10 new unemployment claims come into the town as an employer each week. as an employer each week. My recommendation in comparison to that revised budget for the school is a $1.2 million reduction or 1.7% in total revenue being allocated for their operations. And then within the balance of the town operations excluding utility, there's a reduction of almost $900,000 or 3.16% for those budgets. You'll recall the school department budget's about a $67 million total operations from the general fund and the municipal non-utility, non-operating, or not, yeah, non-net service aspect of the budget is about $30 million. That's really my final slide at this point. I just want to provide that high-level overview as we move into July in anticipation of having go to town meeting and being ready to go to town meeting in late July or early August. I will flesh out this plan obviously in much more detail and there'll be consideration and comment further by the board and to the finance committee for this, but I just wanted to provide the snapshot at this point in time with where we are.
Thank you. Any other questions? Other questions or comments from the board? Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. I appreciate all the work that you've put into revising and revising and revising again as more information becomes available about the budget. I know that community members are starting to be concerned about where we are heading in both the schools and in the municipal departments, and I think that that overview is very helpful. In both the municipal departments and in the school department, but also trying to be mindful of maintaining operations as best we can as we wait for numbers to mature and get some more indications from the state as to where our state aid will be. So I appreciate that. We're going to move on to item 11 under new business, which is to discuss and act on creating a task force to consider questions of diversity, discrimination and racism in the town of Shrewsbury and how to best address them. Board members, Selectman LeBeau asked to have a working document placed in our packet as a starting point for a conversation about this, about this task force. So take a few minutes to put forth some discussion about how best to start moving forward on this item.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
May I make a couple, I guess introductory remarks and just walk the board through this document?
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
So the first thing I'd like to say is, when I brought up this concept at our last meeting, I tried to make it very clear that I wasn't at all representing that I believe I have the answers. I did state that I have a whole lot of questions. So I am not suggesting that the board lead and direct this work on kind of a micro basis. I think our job is to do what we do well. And I think we can organize a supporting structure that will allow this work to go forward, but to let the task force do the work. I mean, truthfully, I don't think, granted, we're the, you know, the elected executive body of the town. Let's face it, we're five white people. So in case nobody's noticed, and I think we all realize that we shouldn't be, you know, leading, we should be participating, but not leading explorations about these very powerful concepts that the country struggled with. Maybe I'm approaching this the right way because I've already received some criticism on both sides. Some have suggested to me who favor this kind of action, that from what they've heard, doesn't sound like we're going about it in the right way. I've also heard from others who don't think we should be doing anything. Truthfully, I believe if the question is to do something or to do nothing, I'm happy with trying to do something as right as we can than to do nothing. So again, I just want to emphasize that fact because I guess I didn't articulate myself clearly enough to some folks who thought I was taking a position that, you know, I knew what we should do because I certainly do not. But I do believe we need to do something and I think this effort might bring us in that direction. So I do want to acknowledge that we did, almost in parallel, I mean, I reached out to Mr. Mizikar ago and told him I was developing some thoughts on this and he came back and mentioned to me that he had heard from some residents about that, which has led to a letter, item 35, that's on our agenda tonight, signed by 198 residents suggesting establishment of an anti-racism committee. We had heard some about that at that last meeting and I commented I wanted to go broader and deeper than that, and I do. And including, and I put this to the board for consideration, I mean, as right to the name of it. And I've used the phrase diversity, discrimination and racism task force, Shrewsbury Diversity, Discrimination and Racism Task Force, because I do think we should, if we're going to have these discussions and discoveries, I think we should certainly, race is a huge issue. It's always been a huge issue, but it's been brought to the forefront as a result of some just horrific events that have taken place. But I think we also need to consider questions of age, of physical and mental challenges, of ethnicity, of gender and sexual orientation. I mean, it would be my thinking that this body might want to take a crack at all of those things. Some of you may suggest to me that that's an overreach and I'm very anxious to hear what the rest of the board thinks. As far as the makeup of the committee of the task force, I'm thinking a large body. I mean, possibly as many as 30 members. I think one thing, and not necessarily that big, but I think much bigger than one of our standing committees, which are often five or seven or nine people. I also think by employing the task force approach, we may get people who are interested, highly qualified people who might be interested in taking an intense crack at this, but not be interested in, say, agreeing to a three-year term. So I do think one feeds into the other. As I mentioned, so up 30 members, I've done some task force work in my, in my job and I've seen task forces, task forces of that size work very effectively. I would think said body should have, oh, excuse me, of the 30 members, it should be a mix of government and non-government members, but the majority should be from non-government. I think there should be two co-chairs, a government co-chair and a non-government co-chair. And I think the government co-chair, I think, would be helpful in, at least, you know, running the meeting appropriately to satisfy any and all provisions of the open meeting law. I think the body should have a wide range of backgrounds and demographics. I think we should consult, though not rigidly follow, but I think we should consult the census data to get us a sense of the demographics of the community and the various groups that make up the community. I think we should make a strong effort to include, you know, people of all ages. Not just, you know, people who've lived in town for a while, brand-new residents, owners and renters. Often we tie public bodies to membership to registered voters. I think in this case, it should be residents and not registered voters. And I wouldn't be surprised if someone might come up with a scenario that there would be a reason, and certainly it would be limited, that possibly someone not from, who no law, who does not live in the community, possibly formerly lived in the community, has some tie to the community that we might want on. I mean, I leave that for discussion. When we met two weeks ago, I threw out 90 days as a possible term. Honestly, I'm starting to think that that's a very aggressive timetable. Again, I'll defer to the board. I do, I'm starting to think, I don't know if we could get the right work done in 90 days, so I am thinking longer. I don't know, six months, a year? I mean, still not an endless eternal committee, possibly a task force possibly making interim reports to the Board of Selectmen along the way. I think, you know, obviously, we need to give a charge to the task force. And I think that charge should not be overly prescriptive. Again, I think we should try to get the best people to serve and to leave them with a reasonably open slate to study matters as they see fit, to consider, to study news and provide a series of recommendations of action items that could be taken on both by government, by the board, as the, by the town meeting, as the legislature, but also broadly to the community. I do think that there should be, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't deny what's going on in the country and the world, but I do think much of the work the task force should be oriented to what's happening in Shrewsbury. I think we should, the task force might want to consider some smaller working groups within, but I think of the task force more as to take this big look, identify some major issues, provide some recommended actions to move forward. I would not be surprised that one of those recommendations might be something along the lines of the, of the standing committee that we heard from Ms. Hilton and Ms. Aier about in that letter. And I would think that that body might be more than, we give the charge to the task force that's broad, the task force comes up with a series of much more defined recommendations and the standing committee's job might be to watch over and guide implementation of said recommendations. And certainly the recommendations would be, have to be brought before the board and considered. Public participation, I'm almost done. Public participation and comment would be an essential component of the task force. So under normal circumstances, we'd hold public hearings. We could still likely do that through Zoom, but, or, you know, other electronic means. Certainly take public comment through written means as well. I think that is absolutely essential. That should be a requirement that's put in the charge. As far as potential members, and this doesn't add up to 30 by any means, and I don't want anyone to think if I've identified or not identified any organization that you're, you know, you're absolutely in or you're absolutely out. I did think that many of the elected bodies in the town should be represented, both by the fact that they're elected, but also by the fact of what their, their charges are. So that would be the Selectmen, the school committee and the housing authority particularly. I think someone from the town manager's office, I think that's fairly obviously should be involved. I think a commission on disabilities, council on aging, board of health should be represented, possibly a rank-and-file employee of the town, potentially someone from a minority background. On the non-government side, I think we would need representation from religious groups, churches, the ecumenical council, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. We have various organizations in town that represent minority cultures, the advise organizations, students, the public at large. Oh, I'd like to hear what you all think about this. You might think I'm not going in the right direction and I would appreciate your guidance, but I would like to hear a little from you and my suggestion would be that, though I think we need to move quickly, I think we need to move in a thoughtful fashion as well, that perhaps we, you know, return to our, we turn off the Zoom and we go back and have time to think about this and come back at our next meeting at July 14th for either further development or for establishment of a, of this body and to some kind of notice out, seeking letters of interest from interested parties. So thank you for the opportunity to, to go through that with you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau. I can tell you've been putting quite a bit of thought into this and I appreciate your comments and also your taking the initiative to move this forward. Board members, any response?
Yes.
Yep, Mr. Samia.
Mr. LeBeau, thank you for all the thoughtful work you've put behind this and taking the lead in this initially to bring this important subject forward. Did a little research, I would like time to think about it additionally. Noticed that the Lexington, Mass started a program like this in 2017. I did reach out to town manager's office, I haven't heard back, but I'd like to take a little time to find out lessons learned from Lexington. They also took initially a narrower approach, but as I was looking even through the, the charge there, they had a very broad approach in terms of inclusion and they wanted to, they, they were making sure, and this was part of the statement, that we'll provide guidance and types of programs that will ensure respect for all Lexingtonians, Lexingtonians, regardless of age, race, age, race, sexual orientation, gender identity, religious beliefs, mental and physical ability, which seems to cover very, all those areas that Mr. LeBeau was referring to. I think it'd be helpful to learn about their approach, how they comprise the committee and reached out to the community and what their outcome has been. So they've been out there a few years, but I think that will be helpful as well to find. I noticed a lot of colleges and universities have that, but hopefully some other communities in the Commonwealth have done this as well, but I'd like to do a little research there. But I think this is a great start and a lot of points that we need to think about to, so that we can move meaningfully and then impactfully going forward. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane?
I'd like to thank John for outlining it so succinctly this evening. I think one issue that we generally seek to do is, we generally seek to put four corners around some issue. And I think on this one in particular, those need to be four very soft, somewhat fluid corners, because I think the board will be better served with our desired outcome is if we move forward and don't over-prescribe. My only concern is that if we over-prescribe, we will inadvertently steer it in one direction or another. I, if other people need time to research other, I certainly respect that, but I think the quicker we get going with the soft four corners, the better the overall effort will be served. So I want to thank my colleagues for the time that they've put into this.
Madam Chairman.
Sorry, I hit a button and I lost the meeting completely, but it's back. Okay, go ahead, Mr. DePaolo.
Just briefly, I also would like to thank Mr. LeBeau. I think he, he's got the broad outlines, I, Mr. LeBeau, I think you've got the broad outlines of what, what needs to be done. I do definitely agree that it should be, the task force should be looking at the diversity, discrimination and race, racism issues, you know, the broad spectrum. I, I'm a, having been, and it's different, it's different in so many ways, but the fiscal study committees had some boundaries and adequate, I think adequate timelines to get the work done. But I do agree with Mr. Kane, I think they need to be soft boundaries, but I do think that they do need to be some boundaries so that they stay focused on, on, on what the core mission is. And I also do agree that it should be focused on Shrewsbury. What, what can we do in Shrewsbury or what needs to be done in Shrewsbury? What can we do in Shrewsbury, or what needs to be done in Shrewsbury? So I would be looking to go along those lines. I think one of the things that the task force should start with is, is look at current policies throughout our town government that deal with these issues. And perhaps aggregate all of those and review those and see whether there are gaps or where things might need to be updated or changed somewhat. Because some of this is, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, let's find out what's out there. We might, we might already have some, some of this work done. I do agree, just by looking at the fiscal study committees, which actually had a more defined mission, they were more data-driven. I think you need at least nine months, you probably need a year. These things take a lot longer than you think they will, once you get into them. But I do think as we put the charges together, whatever that date is, there should be at least one interim report so that we have some sense of progress being made and what direction that, that the group is heading in. And finally, the only thing, I do think public participation is going to be important. But finally, I think the idea of a Standing Committee should wait until we see the results of the task force. It may be that we need a Standing Committee, but at this point, I'm not ready to commit to that. I think we should come, see what comes out of the study of the task force and the recommendations and see what's needed. So I'm looking forward to working on this, putting it together and trying to see it move forward. But I think your ideas are a good way to start pulling this together. So thank you for that work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. Yeah, I agree with all the comments that my colleagues have made. In reading the letter that was sent to us by the community members, I, I see the charge coming from the sort of points that were brought up as things we need to look at. But I also see the committee, after they get the initial work done, sort of identifying where we are right now and how we can make changes and adjustments to limit the prejudice, racism, and discrimination in our community. I feel strongly that there needs to be student representation, the youth of our community front and center on a task force like this. I think those are the voices that are going to help guide us as we move towards figuring out the best way as a community to address some of the very uncomfortable conversations and topics. And I think recognizing that we really aren't 100% sure how to best define a charge for this committee is a great first step in admitting the fact that we maybe aren't aware, because we are five white people, of the kinds of racism or discrimination, or the kinds of things that the task force needs to look into. So I agree, we should move this to the July 14th meeting so that we have the opportunity to give it a little bit more thought, and then come together with a charge and be able to advertise for some participants at that time. So if everyone is all set, we can move on to item 12, which is to review and act on the temporary outdoor dining license approvals in accordance with COVID-19 Order Number 35. And the first one is Robyn Paradise, manager of Jewright Steakhouse, Inc., doing businesses Amici Trattoria and Willie's Steakhouse, 582 Main Street and 2 Grafton Street.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, do you need a motion, a motion to approve? Or is there, is there some discussion points here?
Motion approved.
Second.
You're on mute, Madam.
Yeah, I got it now. Roll call vote, starting with Mr. DiPaolo. Now he's on mute. You're on mute still, Mo.
Sorry, aye.
Okay, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Myself, aye. The second one is Mel K. Gill, owner of Rumen Deep, Inc., doing businesses Bollywood Grill, 97 Boston Turnpike.
Move approval.
Second.
I will take a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Cassavan, aye. And the final one this evening is Colin Parker, manager of Shrewsbury Wings, LLC, doing businesses Hooters, 378 Maple Avenue. The motion to approve their outdoor dining license.
Move approval.
Second.
I'm going to take a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 13 is to review and act on the draft Board of Selectmen meeting calendar, which can be found in the drive for July through December 2020. So if anyone has any issue with any of those meetings, otherwise, I'll just look for a motion to approve. It looks like it's the second and the fourth Tuesday, as is our tradition.
Madam Chair, just one quick comment.
Yes, Mr. Samia.
One thing that I'd like us to consider, not this evening, but to add some more frequent dates to workshops early on in the process, as we look here, to talk a little further on about the review form, starting in fiscal year 2021, as we talk about goal development and the like, that we could look to having more regular standing time for potential updates. Just a future conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Samia. Any other discussion? Take a motion to approve the calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 14 is to review and act on the Town Manager's reappointment of Deborah Daldato, 318 Spring Street, to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023 pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, Section 8J.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Cassavan, aye. Item number 15, review and act on the constable reappointment of John Giannath, 14 Lamp lighter Drive, Reju Ananth, 14th Lamp lighter Drive, Robert Esposito, 237 Maple Avenue, and John Manzi, 20 Hillside Drive, for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2021.
Move approval.
I have a question, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kane.
What validation goes into seeing if people are still living in town, they're still interested, they've maintained whatever level of credential you're supposed to maintain, et cetera?
Mr. Mizikar, would you be able to answer that question for us?
I can. We certainly do seek the individual's interest at their current address to ensure that they want to continue. And with regards to constables, there are a series of reports that they have to provide to us that we verify for this position. All other reappointments, we confirm the individual's interest, and for Town Manager appointments, I post all of my openings, even if the incumbent still would like to be considered for, for reappointment.
Okay, so we have, we have number, we have some amount of information to demonstrate that they are in fact fulfilling the obligation of the position.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Hi, Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
And Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 16 is to review and act on a three-month extension request from Pharmacan relative to Section 9C of the executed host community agreement. Mr. Mizikar, could you provide some detail, please?
Sure. Pharmacan, which is a registered marijuana facility, medical facility, and adult-use facility, retail shop, located at 939 Boston Turnpike, has a host community agreement with the board with specific requirements that are time-bound. And over the last, last three months, Pharmacan has moved and achieved the penultimate step of local approvals, and now is waiting for the Cannabis Control Commission to grant them their final operating license. I have physically toured the facility at 939 Boston Turnpike and can confirm that it is ready to open from a layman's perspective, and as soon as the CCC signs off on it, we will be able to move beyond this requirement of additional extensions, and hopefully they'll begin operating. The intention for them is to go before the CCC prior to the end of July.
Any other questions, board members?
Yep.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
I just, I just want to note, I don't know if Mr. LeBeau may seem, seems to be muted, but you know, he recuses himself from these matters.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Yes, Madam Chair, I will be recusing, I will not be making a motion or a second or taking any action.
Okay, very good. So I will need a motion to approve if we are ready to act on this item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number 17 is to review and act on the Town Manager Evaluation Form, which we have an updated version in our packet. I know, Mr. DiPaolo, you were working closely with our Human Resources Coordinator, Christina Anderson, if you had any comments on this.
Yes, thank you. Basically, what we have is some, some minor changes that were made after our discussion at the last meeting. There is a page that basically says goals. In discussion with Ms. Anderson, I think we agreed that to set up the evaluation criteria for goals as a very generic, broad brush is probably not the appropriate way to go, and that the actual terminology and the ratings for the actual goals will be written to be specific to whatever goal is agreed upon with the manager and the board, because just the generic one is not going to work. So the idea was, it'll have, each goal will have its own evaluation page, and the, the criteria will be specific to that goal. But if we're going to use this form for this current evaluation, we're not going to use the goal, we're not actually going to use the goal portion of it anyways, because we never finalized, finalized all of those. So as soon as we get the goals, I think we, we set the evaluation criteria, I think they're going to be fluid from year to year, unless somebody has another, another view on that. The only other thing I'll say is, this is going to be set up, so this can be done electronically online, it won't be written. So that the length of it, as it appeared on the paper, the paper presentation, it's really not going to be relative, because you're just going to scroll through the, each section as you go. Then you'll be able to check, check boxes and write, write comments on each one, write, write online, and it'll be stored there. So I think, unless other members think otherwise, I think we should take, take this as we have it now and use it this year and come back and critique it and see what worked and what didn't, and make adjustments if necessary. So I guess that, that's it, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on this. I know it was time-consuming, and you did a very thorough job, and I appreciate the effort that went into creating this living, it's going to be a living document. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair, one question through you for Mr. DiPaolo.
Sure.
Mo, thank you for doing this, thanks for the hard work. Quick question for you, the, are each of the factors to be weighted evenly? Is that the, for fiscal year 20, so the aggregate score will be 111? Or is there a staggered weighting for any of these, or is it all the same?
The way it's presently set up, it would, everything would have equal weight. Of course, when, when, make the summary evaluation at the end, and with our comments, each paper can, can weight different sections at that point, from their point of view, could, could put weight onto the various categories as they see fit. Going forward, if we wanted to try to do a weighted rating system, we could do that. We have to talk to Ms. Anderson about doing the research to come up with the appropriate weighting for those things.
Okay, and one other question, if I may, is, so tonight, we're just taking action on the 20 form, or the 20 and 21 form?
We would, well, we'll use this form for 20.
Okay.
The current one we would do, and then, yes, this would be the basis for the 21 form, with the exception of, because we don't know what the goals are going to be. And if we need, after we do this process for 20, if we, if we look at it collectively and think we need to make some changes, we can make those going forward for 21. As long as I, I think as long as we do them early enough in the process, so that it's fair to the manager, that he knows what the criteria are going to be, I think we could make those changes after, after this first round, but I just think they need to be made relatively quickly, or if we do them in more months, I don't think it's good at a manager, because the target could be moving.
Thank you. And then just one follow-up comment, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing that I'd like to possibly bring back at a future date would be a similar assessment for us as a board. When I'm corporate secretary for my company, and part of the annual review is part of good corporate governance, is that the board and the committees have an annual self-assessment and look at how they worked during the year and what they did well, and what, if anything, they'd like to look at. I think for us, it'd be a little different, but where it could be really meaningful would it be goal establishment, and I think they could also really set the goals for Mr. Mizikar. So I think it would be a very valuable exercise for us to consider setting goals for us as a board that would that, them in turn, and for Mr. Mizikar's goal. So that's just a comment and something I'd be happy to bring back as a little blog, knowledge of information on.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
To the clerks, fully, I sit on a board where twice a year, we go through that process and evaluate ourselves relative to the goals set, et cetera, and it is, it's an interesting effort if people take it seriously. Back to the issue at hand, I'm all for being clear with the manager as to what is expected of the manager and the position. At the end of the day, when you hire a manager, you're, you're hiring an amount of technical expertise, but really, you're hiring a person with judgment. So as much as I'll, I'll go for whatever type of scoring and all this other modern management that we want to go through, fine, but at the end of the day, we as a board should not lock our hands into some mindless scoring system that doesn't adequately recognize the individual judgment brought to the table by the manager at hand. It's just an aside.
Anyone else? Anyone else? To Mr. Kane's point, I feel having that ability to do some narrative in the comments section will help it to be less prescriptive and make sure that we aren't locking ourselves in. So hopefully, I know I'm one who likes to write about what I'm seeing or thinking about someone's performance. So that's the part of this tool that I think is going to be most beneficial, I think, for myself in evaluating the manager, but also I would hope for the manager in reading what my thoughts and comments are. So if everyone is ready to move on, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this evaluation form.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Cassavan, aye. Item number 18 is to review and act to authorize payment for the town manager local official bond. Mr. Mizikar, you have anything to comment on that?
No, this is a standing bond. It's a requirement in both the contract and the manager act at the $5,000 face value. It's an annual approval that requires consideration by the board.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion then.
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
And Ms. Cassavan, aye. Item number 19 is to review and act to approve the warrant to police officer and/or dog officer pursuant to Master on Allah, Chapter 140, Section 153.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Seeing none, I'll call a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Cassavan, aye. Item number 20 is to review and act to authorize the chair to sign the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement with mass development to complete the Beal School request for proposal.
Madam Chair, I move, I move the board vote to authorize the chair to sign the First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement with mass development to complete the Beal request for proposal.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? None, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Ms. Cassavan, aye. Okay, that brings us to correspondence. Item number 21 is a letter dated May 29, 2020, from the Shrewsbury Housing Authority regarding their pilot payment. Unfortunately, given the virtual format, the Shrewsbury Housing Authority would normally come in and present this payment to us. It's a payment in lieu of taxes. This year, the amount was $46,068.11. They also noted in their letter to us that they have been providing senior center van service, which is also something that the community greatly benefits from. So we thank them for, for that pilot payment and for the ways that they support the community. Item number 22 is an email dated June 5, 2020, from Linda P. Bradley, bearer of local assessment, regarding equalized valuations and state-owned land valuation determinations. Item number 23 is a letter dated June 5, 2020, from Stephen Boullet of the Planning Board, regarding Article 28 Town Meeting Acceptance of Point Road Right-of-Way Layout. Item number 24 is a letter dated June 25, 2020, from Stephen Boullet of the Planning Board, regarding Article 28, Town Meeting Acceptance of a Portion of Nelson Point Road Right-of-Way Layout. Item number 25 is an email dated June 6, 2020, from State Representative Hannah Kane, regarding S2680 Municipal Governance Assistance Bill. Item number 26 is an email dated June 6, 2020, from State Representative Hannah Kane, regarding the opening of Mass, reopening Massachusetts. Baker Polito Administration initiates transition to second phase of four-phase approach. And we know that we are now in the second part of Phase Two. Item number 27 is an email dated June 8, 2020, from Chris Lund, 235 Cherry Street, earning public records request for NICO, 230 Cherry Street. Item number 28 is a letter dated June 9, from Patrick Pitney, 137 Floral Street, earning a letter of resignation from the Finance Committee. We thank Patrick Pitney for his, I think it was nine years of service on the Finance Committee. He has resigned to be the Chair of the Police Station Building Committee, and we thank him for that. Item number 29 is a letter dated June 9, 2020, from Rob and Deb Luke, 28 Patriot Lane, regarding nuisance dogs at 47 Memorial Drive. Item number 30, an email dated June 9, 2020, from Sandra Wright, Town Clerk, regarding town meeting. Item 31 is a letter dated June 10, 2020, from Jeremy Cohen, Esquire, Boston Dog Lawyers, LLC, 450B Paradise Road, number 289 Swamp Scott, Mass, quest for a dog hearing and alleged violations of nuisance dog Order 47, Memorial Drive. Mr. Mizikar, I believe we're looking into our responsibility to schedule a dog hearing on this matter.
That is correct. Working with counsel, and I will work with the chair to schedule the hearing as appropriate.
Thank you. Item number 32 is an email dated June 12, 2020, from State Representative Hannah Kane, regarding COVID-19 Town Meeting Guidance. Item number 33 is an email dated June 15, 2020, from Mary Jane Handy, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, regarding deficit spending authority in Shrewsbury for July. Mr. Mizikar, I know you have some comments for this item. Would you like me to wait until we get to the next one that's associated with it? Okay. Item number 34 is an email dated June 15, 2020, from Elizabeth Carnes Flynn, Assistant Attorney General, Patrick Higgins, regarding the open meeting law complaint. Item number 35, email dated June 15, 2020, from Bridget L. Hilton, 1 Jacobson Drive, and Sanam H. Zaire, 8 Jamie Lane, earning a proposal for an anti-racism committee. Item 36, an email dated June 16, 2020, from Mary Jane Handy, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, regarding free cash available approval. Mr. Mizikar, I'll pause here for your comments.
Sure, so as you noted, Madam Chair, the state has approved our deficit spending request, which the board authorized at your last meeting. I still do not see a need to deficit spend in any particular account. But we do have that approval and authority if necessary. And then with regards to the other notifications that have come in from the Department of Revenue, it's somewhat confusing this year. This is not a recert, this is not a certification of free cash. It is a recertification of free cash essentially from fiscal year 2019. And it is really the balance between what our initial free cash was on July 1 of 2019, minus the amount that was appropriated through various town meeting votes. And this amount would be available to the town should we need it. In advance, in lieu of having town meeting, if we need it for operations, we have access to those funds.
Okay, item number 37 is an email dated June 16, 2020, from Mary Jane Handy, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, regarding retained earnings available approval. Item 38, an email dated June 16, 2020, from Danielle Frizzy, Director of Marketing, Communications, and Events, Operational Services Division, regarding attending municipal bid management guidance and solutions webinar. Item 39, an email dated June 17, 2020, from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, Carol Runstein, MVP Program Manager, and Hillary King, Central Regional Coordinator, regarding the FY '21 MVP Action Grant Application. Item number 40, an email dated June 17, 2020, from John Campbell, 176 North Street, regarding an email dated June 17, 2020, from John Campbell, 176 North, North Street, a request for non-reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Mr. Campbell's term is complete, and he is asking not to be reappointed to the committee. Mr. Campbell served for a number of years on the Historic District Committee and was responsible for bringing to light the need to restore many of the town markers that we see when we drive into the Historic District Commission. We thank him very much for his service to the community, and will post for, to fill this vacancy. Item 41, an email dated June 18, 2020, from Robert Raymond, Principal Transportation Planner, CMRCP, regarding the CMRCP 2020 Traffic Counting Update. And finally, item number 42, letter dated June 9, 2020, from Marissa Paolo, Chairman, to Robert Turkanian, 306 Cherry Street. Thank you for your donation. That's all we have to hold before the board in our open session. So if there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo. Mr. Kane.
Aye, nice job, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Okay, I made it through the first meeting, so aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Nicely done, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.